Good morning, everyone. I want to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to Warbur. If you would, join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marcy, would you care to lead us in prayer this morning?
Sure. Father God, I thank you so much for today. I thank you for the privilege that we have to be here and the freedom that you have given us to do so. God, I ask that you be with our county, be with our commissioners and all those involved who make the decisions for our county, give them the wisdom and the strength that they need. And again, Father, we just ask that you are a blessing, be upon Owen County and all the citizens here, and be with us during today. It's in your name that we pray, Father. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. If you haven't signed up, there's a sign up sheet over there by Victor. Please sign in. The first order of business is approval of minutes. And gentlemen, we have two copies of minutes. We're still waiting on one, but we're patiently waiting as the auditor's office is busy. So we have one from December nineteenth of 2022. If you've had a chance to look at those, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes from December nineteenth, 2022?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do I hear a s- have a motion by Bob? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have minutes from January the third, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Curry. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have minutes from January the third, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Curry. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
There's that. In the matter of claims and payroll, we have three categories. We have payroll of $263,341.63, regular claims, $416,482.80, and out of cycle claims, $126,622.20. And I'll break those down here in just a minute. Do I hear a motion to approve payroll for January twenty-seventh, 2023?
Make a motion to approve payroll.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Regular claims in the amount of $416,482.80. I did have a couple of questions on some things, and Sheila's corrected those or explained those to me. So I have no issues. Do I hear a motion to approve claims for $416,482.80?
I'll make a motion to approve regular claims of $416,482.80.
And I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three oh, Sheila. And on out of cycle claims, we have for $126,622.20, we have three Tashiva maintenance agreements, COVID immunizations, Travelers' Workman's Comp, ADA Consultant, Epic Insurance Utilities, Caterpillar Greater Lease, and Pete's Muffler. Again, for a total of $126,622.20. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve out of cycle claims of $126,622.20.
I have a motion by Mr. Lowell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
There's several of these. So Sheila, if you don't care, I'm going to go ahead and let you talk about ADA just a little bit, then I'll jump in. You, if you can, or you won't do.
I don't, I was gonna say, I don't know that I know a whole lot. There, I know there was a meeting that took place, and we had received information from the ADA consultant, who again met with, with Jack and.
I'll tell you what, let me help you out. I was gonna say Dana, Dana might be better off.
Because we signed a contract.
Yeah, Dana might be a better runner.
Um, yes, we had a meeting with the ADA consulting regarding the transition plan and the ADA plan. We went through the drafts. We met, it was Jack White, Mr. Burton, and myself that met with David and Preston from ADA Consulting. The, this process is going to be a long one, and you'll probably all be involved at some point. The face, the gist of it is we need to get our buildings up to ADA compliant. And that's gonna take some effort to do that. Putting the plans in place was the first thing. Then there will be evaluations of each building to determine what the needs are. And then there will be a plan on how we're gonna address those. This will likely be a multi-year project in order to bring all the buildings up. ADA compliance will take some time and some money, so we'll have to budget for that through the next several years. But the meeting went well. I believe that we're on the right track. As far as NDOT goes, we're compliant. We have, since we have the plans, we are tweaking them a little bit, so they're, they're not ready to be signed yet, but they will be soon.
Thank you, Dana. Yeah, it was a very good meeting. I, I'm fairly impressed with David and his organization, very on top of what's going on. Works this plan for Owen County. And from our conversation, and I guess speaking of Jack, Jack is our go-to ADA compliant person in Owen County. He's been appointed to that position. So as we move forward and we have ADA compliant issues, he is your contact. He is who you will call to ask for questions. He'll be working closely with David. He said in roughly two weeks, if I'm not mistaken, he would be back as they work through the plan and make sure it fits Owen County and all the correct addresses to our buildings and those type of things. He suggested that he would start with the courthouse first, and then second, go to the jail, which I've already spoke to Mr. White about that, to make sure that we're compliant in these areas. So we're all gonna get a chance to work with him, and I think he's gonna do us a really good job. So anyway, I was impressed, thought it was a good meeting, and that's something that, like Dana said, it is a process as it goes through and finds various issues with buildings or sidewalks, different things like that. Then we go back to the planning table and say, okay, how much is this gonna cost? And we work on these projects as we go along. It could be a ten-year project, could be a five-year project, depending on what else found, so. But as long as we are under agreement and contract with him, my understanding is it doesn't matter if it takes a year or ten years, as long as we're in the process of moving forward.
Yes.
So that's a good thing. We're not under a timetable that we have to have all this done in two years. So. All right. I think that's got that. New business, Marcy King?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Marcy.
This morning, I just have a couple of things I want to talk to you about. The first is upon the completion and approval of the comprehensive plan, HWC and SBC Research and Planning created six original comprehensive plans to be passed out. So I have one for each of you.
Thank you.
I've already given the town council a copy. Economic Development will have a copy, and then I'll be putting myself on the agenda to ensure that the county council has a copy as well. Of course, all of this is online, and anybody can copy off a digital copy if they'd like. I just wanted to tell you again, thank you very much for all your support in making sure that the comprehensive plan was approved for Owen County. The second item of business, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. We have a larger ready report that Sheila has put along for you. It's very comprehensive of the entire 11-county region, upland region. I just specifically wanted to give you an update on the funds that came from ready for Owen County. On this first round of ready funds that came from the state, Owen County was able to capitalize on received In that report, you'll see a paper that looks like this, that kind of divides it up into how that money was utilized. And so that money is spent between ready innovation, housing, communities, and talent. So within Owen County, the $2 million that I just referenced was spread out through water and sewer infrastructure, housing, and workforce development projects. So now the state is working on a ready two-point-O, and I just wanted to assure you that as that information comes down from the state, EDC will continue to see how we can go ahead and bring more of those funds into Owen County.
Excellent. And the last monies, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, as you said, the town got some of that money for water and, and infrastructure for sewer, is that correct? And then Cook got some of it?
So I, I don't think the money went directly to the town. It went to BVP Water because they were the individual who was contracting the water project.
If you could just break that down real quick here for the people in the meeting, so we know, you know, who got that money that first round?
So the first round went to Cook Housing Project, and it also went to BVP Water to expand sewer and water projects within Owen County. And then a lot of those funds actually stayed within ROI because they're creating, about fifty percent of that did, to create workforce development projects for Owen County to bolster the workforce here in Owen County.
So I, I've asked Marcy to, to keep us informed with this next batch coming up. I would like to see some sewer expansion down forty-three for housing projects that the county has land invested down there. So we're gonna work together and try to get something going in that direction.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Those were matching funds. So that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had people putting that money in from the county. So thanks, and we made a capital on that.
Marcy, got a quick question here. We had, and I know you and I talked, you got a grant from Bill C. Brown and Associates for $1,500.
Yes.
What are you, what is your organization gonna use that money for? Is that through economic development? Is that what that was?
That $1,500 was a request to go specifically towards our new co-working space for Owen County. It will go towards the exchange.
Okay, thank you. Highway Department.
Morning, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Like I reported to you, the Franklin Road Bridge has been completed. There were some guardrail issues that I spoke to each and every one of you about. Those have been corrected. There is some approach work that will be, need to be done. It's springtime. The bridge is passing. Wasatch Lake Road Bridge is ahead of schedule, and we're prepared to start the Sand Hill Road Bridge early next week, weather permitting. Grabbers are working routes. We are crack sealing right now as long as weather holds, and we are running a hot box with a labor crew, followed by a roller for compaction. I don't have a whole lot else for you Commissioners, other than we have the project that needs to be done on West Ramona Road in regard to the large culvert replacement. So everyone publicly knows, we have a road slide on Little Flock Road. I've spoke to each of you about that. We have determined through IU Geological that there is a sinkhole that is forming in the road, and we are developing a plan right now to make that repair. That repair, I do believe, will be expensive and time-consuming. We will do that in-house, but right now there's 280 feet of road affected. I've been advised, at least to start, we'll have to dig down to bedrock and start building that back up.
You spoke to DNR on this project, correct?
I did. I did, as well as soil and water. So we have a, a plan. We're gonna have to get the depths figured out this week and then proceed. That being said, we were going to do the Ramona Road Culvert Project in-house, and I spoke to each of you, and I have received quotes from local contractors to put a runaround in and place the culvert. The ready for you today, discussion.
And Greg, real quick, what time is that meeting out there today? One o'clock?
One fifty.
One fifteen.
Did the soil and water director quit or get fired?
Not that I know of.
He resigned.
He resigned, yes.
He resigned.
Yeah, it is open.
I knew something happened there.
Okay, well, I had heard about that, but I have worked with it.
And I think Sheila has reposted that job on Indeed, if I'm not mistaken.
They have, and it's on the board.
We have.
Greg, did you say that part of that Little Flock Project's already been surfaced, that road?
Yes.
Has come back up?
It does. That road was resurfaced two years ago.
I'll let you read your funding.
That, that's where a lot of the expense also is gonna come, to re, resurface it back.
Well, that will be part of it, but depending on how.
Big the hole is?
How big the hole is, and, you know, and the product we have to put back in it, if we're regarding the duty, gets the right compaction to stop the issue.
I've got some other questions, but we'll let, we got three companies quoted this Ramona object here, so Dana can read those, excuse me, for us this morning. I guess while we're working on that, I'll go ahead and ask you, we talked about the used excavator. Have you called and negotiated anything with that gentleman, so we can move forward with some type of financing or payment plan or something to that effect?
I have spoken with him. I was at hopes he would settle for around $65,000, but he has settled at seventy.
Seventy, and he was asking seventy-seven, correct?
Seventy-seven, that's correct.
And I'm waiting on Sheila, and I know she's busy to get the payment schedule that we have for the highway, plus what we have going out, what's gonna get paid off, so on and so forth. So as soon as you can get me that, we'll try to move forward with that. All right, Dana.
Great. The project is culvert replacement and installation of temporary alternate, alternative route on West Ramona Road. One of the bids was from Fender Excavating LLC in the amount of $45,000. Another bid was from Bar Excavating, at the bid amount of $52,000. And the third and final bid was from All-Out Construction and Excavating, and the bid amount was $60,000.
And these funds are available in-house to your current.
The funds are available in-house, either out of 1173 or 1135.
Yeah, being considered a bridge or culvert project would qualify for.
Commissioners, I will state that these contractors are bidding apples for apples. We put out a quote sheet they could all look at, and Fender and Bar actually met with Highway Department staff and myself at location to go over what we wanted all out to do.
Well, they're all fairly close here. I mean, there's, yeah. Any questions, gentlemen? Are there any concerns? Are the pipes on lot, it showed up last week, correct?
Pipe's on last week, and I will note that the pipe is paid for and out of encumbered funds from last year. So that's not coming out of this year's budget.
Excellent. Gentlemen, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Fender Excavating to do the culvert replacement and runaround project on Ramona Road. Myself, Greg, and the county attorney are gonna meet with the Lemmings today out there at that project because we are going to infringe on their property to put this runaround in. So we're gonna make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's at one fifteen today. As long as that goes, fine. I see no, nothing will hold this project up.
Correct. Commissioners, with your permission, I would like to request that the contractor be there also, if he's available.
Okay. So I had added some stuff after I made the motion for Fender, but anyway, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Three oh for Fender Construction, $45,000.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lastly, I'd just like to report that the community crossing grant was submitted on time and accepted on the first go-round, which is pretty unusual. So sometime in May, we'll know about those.
Excellent.
That's all I had.
All right, guys. Thank you. Yeah, we, we have an ordinance here, Greg, if you don't care real quick.
Sure, Greg, yeah.
We, we have the four-way stop, stop sign intersection at Kelly Road and Denmark Road. We'll let Dana read that and then ask for approval. Do we have an ordinance number, Sheila?
Zero zero one.
Really?
Probably not zero, man. First one.
This is an ordinance establishing stop signs at the intersection of Kelly Road, which is 1400 West, and Denmark Road, 150 South, in Owen County, Indiana. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County desire to maintain its streets under its jurisdiction and control to be safe and secure from dangerous traffic patterns. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County find this proposed ordinance will promote the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens of Owen County. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County as follows. Section one, this ordinance establishes a four-way or all-way stop, as appropriate, at the intersection of Kelly Road 1400 West and Denmark Road 150 South in Owen County, Indiana. All vehicles approaching the intersection of Kelly Road 1400 West while traveling both east and west on Denmark Road 150 South shall come to a complete stop at said intersection before proceeding through the intersection. All vehicles approaching the intersection of Denmark Road 150 South while traveling north and south on Kelly Road 1400 West shall come to a complete stop at said intersection. The Owen County Highway Department shall erect and maintain traffic and control signs at the intersection of Kelly Road 1400 West and Denmark Road 150 South. This ordinance shall not be enforced until the signs are erected. Thereafter, any person violating this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of $100. The operator shall be liable for any and all costs incurred by Owen County for the prosecution to collect said fine, including, but not limited to, court costs and attorney's fees. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption and publication as required by law, passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, and a regular meeting held on the sixth day of February, 2023.
Thank you, Dana. Does that suffice?
It, it does, and thank you, Commissioners. Just so everyone in the audience knows, this is prompted by the horse-drawn, you know, wagon tracking area.
With the Sheriff's Department here, just kind of a heads up, something new out in that area for your deputies, so.
And I did use the term vehicles, so that instead of what was used in previous times to include horse-drawn vehicles as well.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Dana.
All right, gentlemen. Any questions on the ordinance, concerns? Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 2023 dash zero zero one? An ordinance establishing a stop sign at the intersection of Kelly Road and Denmark Road in Owen County.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance establishing stop signs at the intersection of Kelly Road and Denmark Road in Owen County, Indiana.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. With a normal utility location, you can expect those signs to be erected by Thursday.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg, I want to pass along thanks to Highway Department again for auto buying, for a lot of compliments. I know it took a lot of work.
Got one more thing here, Greg, before you jump up. Ordinance 2023 zero zero two is a surplus ordinance. And Greg, so you know, you had a couple of items. The maintenance had some items, so we attached all these together. Steve has not done the govdeals.com, so if we can give him some help on posting this information, whoever does that for you. And with that being said, Dana, I'll let you go ahead and take over there.
This is an ordinance declaring certain personal property as surplus for Owen County Highway Department and Owen County Government. Whereas the Owen County Highway Department and Owen County Government have determined that certain personal property currently in possession of the Highway Department and the Owen County Government is no longer of value to the department and desires the property to be sold at public auction. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code 5 dash 22 dash 22, as sequence, the Board of Commissioners of Owen County has determined and declared the property as surplus may have a total value of greater than $5,000 when it was all combined. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County the following. Section one's the personal property to be sold. The items of personal property of the Owen County Highway Department is shown on attachment one, and the Owen County Government, as shown on attachment two, are declared surplus property and are hereby ordered to be sold to the highest bidder at public auction to be held on an internet auction site maintained by govdeals.com. Section two, the auction. This section is the statutory basis of being able to use electronic online auction site. Section three is the notice of publication. And pursuant to Indiana Code, this sale must be given by publication of the time, place, and terms of the sale as provided by Indiana Code 531 and the county where the property is located. Publication shall be made at least fifteen days before the date of the sale. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption and publication as required by law. The attachment one has two items from the Highway Department, and it's a 2003 Bowmag and a metal desk with mapping drawers. And the other attachment is a very comprehensive list. It includes desks and cabinets and tables, work tables, coffee machines, cash registers, office chairs, and so on. The list is very extensive. These are things that have been accumulated over quite a long period of time. And because of the extensively of the list, that's why it's possible it could be over 5,000. I, I know the Highway Department's thinking about 2,500, maybe in that range for theirs. So publication is required if it's over 5,000, so to be safe, even though it may not bring that much, I still believe that it is appropriate to publicize. So once an auction date is set, then fifteen days before that date, a notice can be given. If needed, I can assist in drafting that notice.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Yeah, there's an extensive list. And again, what we've tried to do is clean up the basement in the courthouse. Okay, thank you, Dana. Yeah, there's an extensive list. And again, what we've tried to do is clean up the basement in the courthouse. Several pieces of desk and chairs and things like that, as well as down at the armory. We're running out of room. We we have no safe place to harbor our employees if we have a natural disaster of some kind. We couldn't get, excuse me, ten people into court down in the basement right now. So we're trying to trying to accommodate that if we do have a problem or an issue. So that's one of the reasons that we're cleaning this stuff up. I think we also have some filing problems down there. Some of those buildings or offices are are dedicated to each department. Many of those are completely full. We're going to have to start moving some documents to the basement of the armory as we move forward. So anyway, with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty three zero zero two declaring certain personal property surplus for Owen County Highway and Owen County Government?
I'll make that motion, read doc twenty twenty three dash zero zero two for the Highway Department and Owen County Government.
Sorry. Normally, when we've done those, it's already had the dates and things in there because we of the advertising and getting it to the paper. So you guys will have to do, or they have to do another one?
No, declaring it surplus and declaring it can be sold on online auction is all that the Board of Commissioners need to do. Now it can be up to the staff to get it all ready for auction and and then again, a notice will have to be provided, but that's also in the ordinance. So there would not need to be.
And your items are ready to go as well as Steve. Steve has got all of his stuff assembled in the armory.
Want to pay to advertise it twice?
Shops all good with it today.
Okay. Anything else, Sheila? Okay, I've got a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, I think we're done. All right, elected officials and department heads. Sheriff, nothing. Susan? Polly, nothing? All right, auditors comments. I think you had a few.
First, permission to, we need added Adobe license. I believe I have enough in in the line items to be able to pay the twelve ninety nine a month. If not, I'll go back to council, but I need permission. We have to get it ordered through IT.
So I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's office to obtain another Adobe license. We maintain so many of those, and she's asking for another license to be added. So I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget should be in in all the departments. Hopefully by the end of the day, they're they're there. I'm just waiting for Lao to import them and hopefully encumbrances in the next couple of days. Unfortunately, I have an employee out with COVID. Hopefully, nobody else. We're trying to figure out how to get payroll done and processed by noon Wednesday and keep up with the the claims and and that added workload. But hopefully, everybody will get a paycheck. Be patient. If you know you have issues, just give us a call and and try to figure that part of it out. There's an asset management plan that was done. It'll be each year. It's not a contract. There will be training that is to be offered. It is for all department heads. We'll meet individually. We're going to have one group meeting in here. And then this gentleman is willing to meet with all the departments individually if needed, and this is basically uploading your inventory. This will be an annual thing that is due. Normally, inventory is submitted the first of January or so each year anyway. This is a required plan by the state, and we don't have to do it. There are the major departments, EMS, highway, I believe the sheriff's in there already. He he loaded some of those from the past inventories, but we do need to make sure that it's correct. I will be sending that around. Again, data pit stop is is who is handling that inventory. SRI tax cell.
We have an approved last week to move forward with SRI Commissioner Tax Cell. They have, at the time, did not have the agreement in front of us, and we have that now. It does require one signature. If I'm not mistaken, it's no, all three, I'm sorry. So this time, I'd like to make a motion that we sign this contract. Go here, second.
Second.
Got a motion by myself, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Sheila, I want to touch on one other thing that you had brought up to me. You and I have been working on this. I know Joel's talked to you. We have, Sheila has brought to our attention a company called Right Stuff Time Management, being used by about nineteen counties. Ton of favorable feedback from that. There is a card swipe or a fingerprint type system for each department. I think this will save the county a lot of money and comp time, various issues with that. The county attorney has also been informed and is concerned about ghost employment, which is a huge liability for Owen County. And and by saying that, it's we're writing down seven hours when somebody only worked six and a half, those type of things. And that is a huge, huge problem. So Sheila's looking into that. I have asked her to contact this company, put together a work session with anyone that wants to show up, obviously counsel, commissioners. It's something that we need. We've talked about this for about four years now, and I know Sheila would like to work this into some type of payroll system. We need to dump that out of our county. I got Matt shaking his head. I got Joel agreeing. I know I agree. I I think there's probably not a department head in this county that's not going to agree with that. We found out that rights, and I'm telling you a little bit about what I know, and I don't know a whole lot, just Sheila and I communicating back and forth and emails that I've been attached to. They are compatible with Lao somehow. I don't know how that is because Lao's not compatible with anything as we've tried this in the past. But what we don't know is how that ties into a payroll system. So we're still looking into this. I think it's going to be money well spent once we figure out where it's at. We don't have any cost yet. I'm just throwing this out there for information because we are moving forward. I know Joel and I both have made comment that, you know, within six months, definitely by the end of this year, Owen County will have a time management system.
There was an email that originated early last week with the auditors across the state, all ninety two counties. Again, a couple of them asking who was using this particular company. I've never heard of them, so started looking into it. There are a couple others out there. They create a program that is is adaptable to your county. And if you're wanting it just in the courthouse or wherever. And then that, there still will be one of my staff members having to enter a lot of it into Lao because no matter what we do, we have to have everything in the financial system so we have accurate reports. So it still will have that data entry. It's just more accountability overall, I think, is what we're looking at, and it's something that had been talked about prior. Trying to figure it out. Again, I think the best thing to do is just have them come and do a presentation because I don't understand all that. We might not need all of the components that are in there. So as soon as I can get that set up with that one, same thing with the data management. So there'll be emails that'll be coming out. I will try to do evening meetings to make it to where the council and and commissioners and everybody can be there. I'll advertise it so we can be there. It will just be one session to just give you the information. It would be a contract, so it would have to come through the commissioners. And again, have no idea what the expenses. I have that email back out to the group. So maybe we'll know a little bit more going into it, but I'll keep you all on the loop as soon as we can find out a little bit more.
And also on this, sorry, Sheila, I mean, Sheila and I have talked about this as well. And this is a huge concern for me, and it definitely should be a huge concern for the council because it's a financial related issue. There's not a department in the county that figures payroll the same. I I don't know how that's feasible, but that's what's going on. Somebody's rounding to the five minutes. Somebody's going to the quarter hour. We got people trying to pay people to the minute. We're all over the board. And it's a disaster and how how the payroll department down there tries to figure this. And then on top of that, we're figuring to the third digit instead of rounding to the nearest tenth or the nearest penny. That's another issue for payroll. So anyway, with our conversation, there are discontinuing problems that needs to be fixed, and we need to eliminate this out of that office.
Well, another thing you might point out, Commissioner Burton, is that the fact that there's one department in Owen County Government that clocks in and out, that's the Highway Department. I don't know, Sheriff's Department clocking in and out?
Radio.
Radio. But as far as actual time management, we have one organization that actually clocks in and out. The rest is hearsay.
And and those are, and again, Joel, you're right, they do, they transfer that time to a pay sheet to the county that they come, I mean, it's it's a step process.
It's an end point.
Exactly. Our our whole payroll department is just a disaster.
We we just need to, and again, I plan on going to the council, one, request an employee, but two, there's little things that they can do. Again, their packets go out on Wednesday. We're paying holiday pay quarterly. Why are we not paying it? You know, every time that everybody else gets paid every two weeks except for three or four of them. We're paying employees that are no longer there because they were on the clocks at the time, so we're having to figure those out. So again, the holiday and the longevity. If those both were just figured in, just like everybody else's minus the sheriff and EMS and them, it just would, it's one more thing that would help streamline it. So I am, but those are council ordinances and and changes that are needed. So we might have to, you know, catch up a little bit, but I unless you guys can tell me something that it's easier to pay them quarterly for holiday pay than it is every two weeks when payroll's happening anyway, those are some of the simple things that can be done that that we're going to ask the council to consider and.
Well, and I think that's had some, I mean, that's something like our meeting that we had, that's something we can discuss there. And we're in the process of getting it out and figure it out.
And so again, in the next several months, there will be little changes along the way as as we get to the council and commissioners meeting in this. But we are trying to work on payroll. It is, it's just too much for one person to handle. They're doing payroll and benefits both. Plus, we have all of this other stuff. So it it is of concern. We're we're getting paychecks out. And yes, there's been a few mistakes along the way. We apologize, and there'll be more before it's over, I'm sure. But please be patient and don't hesitate to call if there is an issue. That's all.
Ryan and Matt, just to touch base real quick, this program we're looking at was designed for police departments, sheriff departments. That's where it originated from, and they have expanded since then. So the program fits your departments. So anyway, just want to put that out there. And again, we're getting a lot of good feedback from from several counties in the state and big counties not. Yeah.
And offer, if you know of another company or somebody else that's out there, please throw, you know, if we're going to be looking into it, let's look into. This is just something, again, that generated and and it's it's worth looking into that there might be other companies or you might be aware of something that your person remember.
So we're trying to get a meeting put together, and Sheila will work on that with this company. Again, it'll be a work session where everybody can participate and ask questions and so on and so forth. Anything else, Sheila? Attorney comments?
I have none.
Commissioner comments?
All right, yeah, we need to appoint Gary.
Yeah, we need to.
That was my next. I'm giving you guys a first chance here. We have had a heck of a time with our building inspector. Just lost another one a couple of weeks ago. I don't understand what the problem is with this position. It's a pretty decent position, full time, comes with the benefits. We had interviews last week, got down to two two individuals and made a decision on, Mr. Gary Dubeys is here this morning. Susan and I conducted those interviews. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve and appoint Gary Dubeys as the new full time building inspector. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Motion by myself, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Gary will be our fifth inspector that we've hired in about six months. We have a growing county with building development with the Cook Project, the Four Oaks, and many others that are going on. And this is a position that we cannot leave vacant. Rick has been promised to retire. He is asked to retire. We have promised him, and we just keep bringing him back and keep bringing him back. And it's going to get to the point where he is no longer going to come back. So Gary, we had a very direct interview with you. You understand how I feel about this position and the situation that we're in. So we look forward to you coming on board and doing a job for Owen County. You're an Owen County resident. You live here. You know these people. We're looking forward to you being here with us for a long time.
Thank you.
So thank you for applying and then getting on board. And Susan has your employment packet down there, I believe, and we'll get that all taken care of and get you up and going here in the next few days. All right, thank you very much. The attorney just passed me a note, and I'm probably going to let him address this more so than myself. There was some issue with work at home policy. We do not have a work at home policy. I want to make that very clear. And I'm going to let him touch on that moving forward.
Okay. There was a question about whether somebody could work remotely or not. And Owen County does not have a policy to allow for that. There are a couple policies that refer to attendance. Policy seven oh one, employee conduct and work rules, has a non exclusive list of infractions of rules of conduct for which disciplinary action can be taken, including termination. The second is that, or one of those infractions is excessive absenteeism. And the other is an absence without notice and unauthorized absence from the workstation during the day. The, it states in the policy that Owen County, Indiana, expects employees to be reliable and to be punctual in reporting for scheduled work. This policy also shows the Owen County employees must report for work. A report as used in this policy means to present oneself, so be at at work. There was a question about is there a law that that remote work is, has to be available, and there is not? There's even a policy the State of Indiana has for remote work. We have talked about updating our personnel manual and policies. The commissioners have informed me that they do not approve of remote work, though there could be some very extreme, serious circumstances that that might allow temporarily. Those would be on a case by case basis to 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 be approved by the department head and likely the commissioners as well. But we'll be putting a policy on that procedure so that everybody knows what the steps and requirements would be. So it, and I know it's been an issue for a lot of employers with their employees working remotely, not knowing, you know, what they're they're doing, spending their time. And so to to the maximum extent possible, the commissioners have stated they do want the employees at work physically.
Thank you, Dana. And I know that this question came up to Mr. Lowell.
It did.
An employee or department had asked him to work remotely, and Joel called and asked me, and I told him that I was pretty sure we didn't have one. And and as he said, and I'm going to agree with him, we have a hard enough time doing time management now because we don't have a time management. We have no way of knowing if somebody's at home watching Netflix or, you know, out playing in the snow or whatever it is they're doing. So it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense unless it's a circumstance that requires such.
And I believe in that. I, Gary, I think that under certain circumstances, case by case, like that, we should, you know, take a look at if somebody's physical ailment allows them or needs them at home or whatnot. So certainly case by case, but not written anywhere.
Correct.
Can I add? This is just another prime example. If we want paychecks to everybody by Friday, and I have the employee that can't be here, we, I I mean, I have to allow the process to be done. we, I mean, I have to allow the process to be done because I don't have a backup. So this is one of those prime examples and I even used it in a reply to the email. You know, here, here we are again. I have to allow, so in that manual or that policy, you know, we're not always going to be able to get to the commissioners before a meeting and the department head. So I think there needs to be some verbiage that, you know, if, if an email is sent out that this is what we have, if there's, you know, how, what's the timeline because you don't always know that there's something, you know.
In the, in the case that you dealt with, it was evident that work was being done. It was being accomplished by remote or otherwise, it was being accomplished. That's very understandable.
Just, here's a perfect example of why we need an outside payroll company. Those people are there, they are a company. They don't get sick and stay home. They have a company that runs that. You're in a totally different situation when we have one person, basically one person only that does payroll. We're not cross-trained in these offices. That's been a problem as well. I've said that for four years, you know, we depend on people and it puts you in a very bad situation. You have one person that does payroll and your office gets shut down because that person's gone. So anyway, that's just another prime example of why we need to look outside and I think that we should move forward with that. Any other comments, concerns? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody have a good day. Thank you for being here.
Gary, are you running off to work?
Yeah, I'm running to go to do a dress test.
Apologize. I forgot this. I want to have Dana, have you looked at this?